Okay, it's six o'clock. We're ready to meet. First, we're going to continue the meeting of March, or May 21st, that was adjourned and continued to this date because we ran out of time to complete all the items on the agenda. So, going to that. Question of approving change order number one in the amount of $27,775, I'm sorry, $27,775 with Cape Way Roofing Systems in connection with the Putterham Golf Course Roof Replacement Project. Mr. Mason.
Yes, my name is Patrick Department. This is a change order for pointing the three machines. When we started the project, the engineer took a closer look at the machinery and they were in a sad shape and we changed it and it's now all fits in the room.
Any questions? Okay. On favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, question of approving a change order in the amount of $11,757.55 cents, Wisconsinka USA Building Inc. in connection with the Brookline High School Expansion Project.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's actually for $11,757,555.
Oh, really?
There's just, there's a typo on the agenda.
Okay.
Five hundred and fifty?
Five hundred and fifty-five.
Five, five, five.
Sorry, we'll give you the extra money.
You asked, so I said. Wisconsinka was hired as part of a construction management and risk process. They were brought on early. This is part of what we call the enabling work, putting the shovel in the ground. The project will start officially on June 10th. And this is part of the early packages that, per the construction management and risk process, this allows us to do a little bit packages.
Okay, and this is, and this is not what they were at risk for? Or that's separate from?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me get into what at risk means.
Okay, let's not. Any questions? On favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Question of approving an amendment in the amount of, I assume it's $66,600?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
With William Ron Associates Architects, Inc. in connection with the Brookline High School Expansion Project.
So, the Win for a Palace program, great program that's over at Wolfman. The school department has decided to move that program over to 111 Cypress, to do 111 Cypress building, to the basement of that facility. In order to do that, we need to reconfigure it, but reconfigure the basement spaces. And this is the changing fee to do that.
Okay, so, when, how long is it going to be there?
The Win for a Palace?
Yeah.
So, when 111 Cypress opens, we'll win for a palace, we'll move back over to, renew it, in two years.
Okay, 111 Cypress is the new high school annex?
Yes.
Okay, so, I assume they're not going to be there when they're, it's being torn down?
No, the intent is to redesign the space.
Mm-hmm, temporarily.
And then when we open, we'll bring that program over to the.
Okay. Any other questions? I move approval. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Question of renewing, thank you, Mr. Mason. Question of renewing a mobile food vendor license for Zack's Ice Cream Truck by Ahmed Akhmatabad, Akhmatatbi Operator. Is, is he here?
We didn't ask him to be here for renewal like this.
Is there, is there any issues we should know about?
No.
Okay, good. I can't apologize for mispronouncing his name. I'll work on it if he comes. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
The rest of the items, Mr. Chair, have been canceled, postponed for the remainder. We schedule it at another time.
Okay, okay.
So, we can, we can.
Okay. Move to adjourn, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, let's open the meeting for May 23rd, 2019. This was posted for tonight in order to allow us to discuss the items on the agenda, which were not on the agenda for the previously posted meeting. First, are there any announcements from the board? No? Any comments from the audience? No?
I do have one announcement.
Okay.
So, we're going to have a community meeting about scooters and the pilot on June 12th at 6:30 in the select board hearing room. So, I will be.
What are you going to have?
We're going to have a community meeting about scooters, the pilot about scooters, at Town Hall, sixth floor, select board hearing room, on June 12th at 6:30.
I actually do have an announcement. I want to remind people about the Memorial Day Celebration, or Event, perhaps is a more appropriate word, on Monday. There's a bus that's going to do a loop of the town and visit various cemeteries with appropriate ceremonies at each of them. That leaves, I believe, at 8:30 a.m. from the VFW post. And then, there will be a more formal program in front of the Veterans Memorial, in front of Town Hall, in the late morning. I think 11:30 is when that's scheduled to start. Details on the town website.
And after the, the event at Town Hall, there'll be refreshments at the VFW Hall.
I have, I have one announcement. I just wanted to remind you all and our audience that the John F. Kennedy Memorial Site is celebrating its 50th anniversary of its opening on Wednesday, May 29th, in the morning, combining it with the yearly, the annual event of an essay contest for the third graders at the Coolidge Corner School of what JFK means to me. And that, that portion of the morning will occur from approximately nine to, 10 to 11. And then from 11 to 12 will be the celebration of the 50th year of John F. K., John F. Kennedy's opening of his birthplace. So, public is invited. Hopefully, the weather will be good, but there will be a tent. So, I hope to see you all. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Any other announcements or comments? No? Move on. Item number three, sustain.
There's nothing under missed, should have probably.
Okay, so, we're under our calendar now.
Number four now.
Yeah, okay, number four. Yeah, I meant four. Sustainability. Question of authorizing the town administrator to execute a contract for the continuation of the Community Choice Electrical Aggregation Program for electric supply and renewable energy procurement for Brookline residents and businesses on bid day. Mr.?
Yes, I can start. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, as I think all of you know, the town engages in the state's Community Choice Aggregation Program for electricity. And we've had a very successful rollout of a first, first contract. And now, our contract is nearing its end and will expire in, in January, I believe. And so, we believe that it's the time to go out to the market right now, and that's why this is on your, in your calendar this evening. The other reason, just logistically, why we can't deal with it like we do normally with contracts, where we send a bid out, get proposals or bids, and then come to you at a future time and get your approval, is because the electric market, the utility markets are very time-sensitive. And so, we're going to issue this bid, and then when we get bids on next Wednesday, we need, we'll only have an hour to, to deal with them. So, so that's why we're asking you to designate myself to serve in your, delegate your responsibility. So, but let me talk a little bit about the, the substance of this issue. And there's a lot of staff and consultants and advisors here, along with the select board member Heller, who's been very active in this. So, I think, as you know, our current aggregation supplier is DynaGee. And that, that contract expires in January of 2020. And so, our consultant, Good Energy, has advised us that it's now is the, is the time to seek bids for, in the renewable energy market. Right now, the, the program has what I, I consider four options. You've got the default 25% renewable energy contract. You can opt down to a 0% additional renewable. You can opt up to our preferred program, which is 100% renewable energy. And you can opt right out of the program altogether and just go with the standard ever-source utility rate. So, our goal is to try to bring that default rate up, because that's where, I think, almost 94% of our residents who participate are in that program. So, we would love to be able to expand that, the renewable energy component of that default rate. But we're a little nervous, and that's what we've been sort of dealing with, and that is, if you go too high, or you go too aggressive, you run the risk of, you know, making the difference between the energy, the ever-source rate and, and our default rate, or the zero rate, much higher. And we could risk, you know, people just opting out of the program, or going down below where we want them to be. So, we were, we're very careful, we want to be very careful. We believe, we'd like to inch it up by, up to 30%, and that's an option. We also want to talk to you about the possibility of creating another tier, an optional tier for 55%. But I'm going to ask Nancy and Zoe to lead that discussion. But clearly, our goal is to, is to try to get our community to use more renewable electricity so that we can meet our aggressive goals for zero emissions by the year 2050. So, with that, Zoe, or first, let me ask select board member Heller if she wants to say something, and then I'll ask Zoe if she could walk us through and answer any questions using our consultants and other advisors who are here this evening.
Certainly. I, you know, have been very involved in this program and feel that it is the single easiest and most cost-effective way for a household to increase its renewable energy. And so, I would urge people to, at the very least, select one of the renewable energy options, hopefully 100%. Unfortunately, we have, despite our efforts, and we do have now a competition with Newton, a friendly competition, as we have, I don't know how friendly our football competition is, but this is meant to be friendlier. And to see who can opt up, get the most opt-ups. So, we're urging you not only for that reason, but more importantly, for the reason of contributing to our, reduction of our carbon emissions here in Brookline. I would like to go as far as we can on the default, because it's clear to me that, as I look at statistics from other communities, that the default really is where it's at. People are, you know, they may be committed to climate change, but somehow, the idea of looking at your electric bill and analyzing what it means and, and making the phone calls just isn't happening to the great, to the extent we would like. And costs may be a factor as well. So, with that said, I think that the recommendation from our broker is that we stick to the neighborhood of 25 to 30%. I would, I would push pretty hard for 30. And, but I add another tier so that people have an option in terms of cost. And if that's important to people, we could make that happen. And 55% is not as good as 100%, but it's better than 30, or it's better than 25. So, I would like to have us, well, our goal is to reach 100% by 2050, but I'm hoping that we can do, do that much more quickly, because the IPCC has said that we've got to reduce our emissions by 50% in, by 2030. And so, to do that, we really need to ramp this program up to the greatest extent we can. So, I'll defer to Zoe, she, Zoe Lynn. She have other comments to make?
And explain what the board has to vote on, other than authorizing town administrator to, to sign for us? Nothing?
It's a very simple vote.
Okay.
It just needs you to give Mel the okay, and you will pay care of the rest. And I'm here along with the whole team to answer questions, but I feel now Nancy, they did a really good job covering the program, so, but I, we can cover specifics if you have them, specific questions.
I will remind you that last time, this is, this is the procedure we followed. Mel was in the room at the top of the bids, and he was authorized by the board to sign the contract, and, and that's what happened.
So, the last time we went through this, we were looking not only at percentages, but also had an eye on costs. And I'm wondering if that additional variable dimension is being considered at all as we go through this for the second time?
Yeah, so, we are doing a competitive bid process, and we will, the energy markets are regulated. We have Good Energy here, and you can probably get into the specifics, but yes, costs are very relevant, because we care about people staying in the program, staying in the aggregated program, and, and presenting a, a package that people can afford.
But specifically, I think, Ben, you may be referring to, there was a aspirational goal or expectation that we might stick around a certain dollar amount.
Oh, in regards to renewable energy?
Yeah, seven dollars.
It's a seven dollar increase.
Yes, we are still using that as our framework.
Okay.
Yes.
And let me remind you that we did very well last time. And even in, in the last six months, the rate for, the ever-source rate for just a regular rate, if you opted out, you paid the same as if you were, almost the same as if you were in 100% renewable energy. Really, our program is a very good deal compared to ever-source. And it's proved to be a good deal. There've been times when it's, it's actually higher than our 0%. So, our program is a good one, and, you know, we'll continue to monitor it closely in terms of what the bids come in at.
Yeah, and I think when Nancy speaks, she, I want her on the select board speak of this, and I think you guys are probably have all heard her say how highly effective this program is in regards to reducing emissions, and she's very right. There's four major areas that we can target our emissions across, across Brookline. It's our buildings and energy, our transportation, our way we handle our bio products, like agriculture or paper products, and then our waste and industry consumption of goods. But, because we don't, the way we purchase our foods and our goods are indirect emissions. We don't have direct control. Those are just about your carbon footprint, the other two are your buildings, you know, how you heat your houses and how you deal with your transportation. So, and those, those are enormous sources of emissions in the United States and Brookline's biggest impact area. So, it's a very important program. We've got to keep working on it.
I have a couple of questions. One around, so, I've, yeah, I checked to make sure that this was the case earlier, but I had already opted into 100%,
Great.
and, which is terrific, and it's, it works for me, I can afford it. But I am, I am just, I just want to know the impact for, for people who might be low-income in town. Do, is there, is there a, you know, can you tell me, basically, if we go up 10% or, or, you know, every 10% we go up, how much more does that, does that mean for someone's, someone's bill?
Yeah, so, we have a chart. I'm going to ask Philip if he knows this by heart, or should I pull up that chart? That's, it's a range, depending on your kilowatt hours. I think that your high range could be up to $300 a year. And I'll check this, and I can even forward it to you. And so, depending on where you, depending on the bid and the contract that we get back, which, we don't know, those, those are in process, right? May 29th, we'll get the bids back, so we'll know the exact amount for the next contract period. But it could be anywhere from $3, $4, $7, which Ben was referencing, which is what we're trying to stay in for the default, and up to 300, maybe if you have a really big house, and you're opting up to 100% for the year. In some cases, you're, as Nancy was pointing out, in our current contract, as of right now, you can get 25% renewable energy. So, it's, you know, the state portfolio plus Brookline portfolio, 25 additional percent of renewable energy for less than what ever-source's basic service rate is. So, so, I mean, that would be great if our bid came back at that, but we don't know. The market is generally higher right now, so we are, May 29th, we'll be able to tell you what the.
The other question is just, sounds like a great deal. Why are only 3% of Brookline residents up to, up to 100% right now?
Yeah, I think you guys didn't have a sustainability administrator.
Ah.
So, we need to get to work. And now that you have that, we'll, I mean, Nancy's been working hard, but she's got a full-time job, so, and we have a lot of other people that have been, you know, working hard, but they don't have access to the data that I have as a staff person, you know, because I just all fill it back there and say, send us what we need and get it, help us get the marketing going. Residents can't do that. So, now that we have a person here that can help administer that, I think we can probably, let's figure out why we're only at 3%.
Yeah.
That's, that's at the summit on June 5th, that you are all going to be at. You're going to vote up a program, I hope, that says, let's work really hard on our opt-out campaign.
Maybe some short-term and long-term goals also.
Exactly. Let's get that to 100% over the next five years.
I think that there's a certain amount of one-on-one with people to get them to understand what it means topped up and what it, what the cost is. The other thing I forgot to mention is that we've used, for our recs, we've used Green Energy Consumer Alliance, formerly MassEnergy.org, I always get it mixed up. And that is a nonprofit. So, you should have gotten a statement in the mail about how much you spent on that renewable energy, and if you itemize, you're allowed to take that as a charitable deduction. So, for people who are, who are in that category, it helps. Fewer of us are because of tax, tax reform, but still, it, it helps. But I think Zoe has a good point. The 25% in, in ever-source rates go up and down, the 25% can be lower than ever-source's rate, and it has been. So, it's just a matter of getting people to focus on their energy bill. They can do it one time and make the call with the bill in front of them and the bill number, and opt up, and then they're done. They don't have to do anything else. And they call DynaGee and, and it's done. So, but for some reason, whatever it is, I don't quite understand, people are reluctant to, to do that. They think, oh, they put it in a pile and they'll do it later, and you know how that goes. So, I think that's part of it. It's just inertia, it's, but I think as we, we hear reports, like from the IPCC and other scientists who are telling us that we've got to get a handle on this. We really do. We're going to be in a lot of problems, a lot of troubles. So, I think that's why Mothers Out Front and Climate Action Brookline and other groups and the Climate Action Committee are trying to push this issue. And, as again, it's, opting up to 100% is the simplest, the easiest way to make, to make a positive impact on the environment. It, it takes 10 minutes to make the phone call, and you're done. And then you have to pay, sometimes pay a little more, right? Now, you're, you wouldn't be paying more, but, you know, in other six-month periods, you might. Overall, I think it can be fairly modest, but depending upon your use. But, we have to do it. Climate, climate change is not free. We have to pay attention to it.
So, the last time we, we did this, two or three years ago, one of the issues that came up in the conversation was the types of recs we were buying, were they involved digester, was it solar, was it hydro? And the second was, where are these recs coming from? Are we financing solar arrays in Arizona as opposed to in Massachusetts and New Hampshire? So, comment on those two dimensions would be appreciated.
Okay, well, I'll just say that Green Energy Consumer Alliance, one of the things that attracted us to that organization is its nonprofit status, but also, it really has the best recs, the, what are called Class 1 Mass Recs. And they invest in regional projects so that they increase the amount of renewable energy in the region. And we don't, we're not buying wind from Texas and, you know, solar from Arizona, no. We are buying the best recs you can buy.
I think Philip would want us to insert the word that the projects are identifiable. We know where our, where the energy's coming from and what recs we're purchasing. And that's another piece that makes our, this a very high-quality program. We're helping to get renewable energies on the grid in New England, and it seems, so I am new. I'm sitting up here, but the reality is, we spoke behind here, have been doing the work, and I just showed up, I just sat up here at the last minute, because I came when this program was fully operational, and I'm just helping them move forward the contract piece, this last piece. And, but, Brookline residents, during the committee last year, Ben, they were asking, they asked for this high-quality rec, because the committee really put time on that, and we're sticking with that model.
Okay, any other questions? Comments?
I guess, I've got one final clarifying question. We're talking about four levels going forward, the 30%, 55%, 100%, and then sort of the opt-out default.
Yes.
No, no, there are two, there are two. There's the opt-out.
Yep.
Altogether, but there's opt-down, which is zero. We, we have a program that competes directly with ever-source's program.
Yeah, so, there's the three in the program and the one opt-out of the program completely. We are also looking at a 55% tier, and there's debate over whether we'll add that one, and we'll probably work on making, finalizing that real in the near future. If you guys have, any of you have thoughts that you want to share about that 55% tier or all yours, or if you have questions? Otherwise, we'll just take care of that as part of the bidding process.
And that, and that'll be part of our consideration when we look at the numbers in terms of, you know, what the bidders say about how much it would cost.
Yeah.
Okay.
There are members of the audience that may want to speak, looks like multiple. Do they come up here, do they?
Well, let's see. We took comments earlier, but we might as well let people come up and, and speak. But, like, three minutes.
I think they'll be quick for you.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter.
They have good things to say, I don't care.
Hello, I'm Werner Lowey, with Nancy Heller, one of the co-chairs of the Select Board on Management Committee, and has, and has involved this process as well. And I hope to clarify something, and perhaps, again, Paul Carr, or Good Energy, or someone else may need to, may need to help me, because I'm not, I call this a complicated area where we need some expertise. But this, I think the central question from my point of view here is, is, as Nancy said, we want to raise the default rate to the extent we can. And personally, and I think, I think most of us, we're hoping to raise it more than 30%. Now, it seems to me that the last time we talked about this, it's complicated, it's a moving target in the marketplace. And, and my understanding is that, I think it's just, given over brief, I think we need to draw attention to it, that the market really has shifted from that, so we hope to go higher than that. And that the fact that we're only 1.5% to 30%, I think is a function of some preliminary work that Good Energy has done in the marketplace to anticipate what the bids are going to come in at. And I guess, what I would like some clarification on, maybe you know Mr. Parker, or maybe you have to ask Mr. Carr, but is that I would hope that bid day is structured in such a way that, you know, for, for surprise in the marketplace, and that it's a little better than we expect, because it is, those are, you know, we have the option of going above 30%. I want to do that. We'd like to go higher than that.
I would hope so, too. I mean, I would hope we are able to. It depends on.
So, we have to, we have to pick our default now. And so, we will write, we won't be able to go higher if it's come back in lowers, but I've been told by Good Energy. So, we will have to identify where we're willing to. So we all have to identify where we're willing to accept the bids, and then 50% of options that we can pass through.
Well, could we reject bids and then do it again?
This is definitely a, we'll swap chairs.
Good evening, everybody. Very excited to be here. Yes, so the complication is with, so first of all, Brookline's a real leader here.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Sorry, oh, yes, Philip Carr, I'm the New England Regional Director of Good Energy. Sorry. Brookline's a real leader here, continuing to lead. Now, comes the second point, just it's the quality of the REX that you use, very unique. Green Energy Consumers Alliance, identifiable projects, they have higher standards than just M.A. Class 1 REXs, they actually should go for M.A. Class 1 REXs that actually exclude REXs from Canada and REXs from New York State. REXs from Canada and New York State are eligible for M.A. Class 1. Green Energy Consumers Alliance does not include those REXs, also does not include biomass, with the exception of anaerobic digestion. So it's a very unique product. What Green Energy Consumers Alliance accomplishes is it allows Town of Brookline to actually participate in helping bring to life new projects, right? Which is, it's a hard thing to do, because essentially they're taking on risk that you don't have to take on. They entered into long-term power purchase agreements with new projects, and resolve the projects that, as a result of contracts that Brookline and a couple of other communities have entered into, the Green Energy Consumers Alliance has actually entered long-term power purchase agreements with a couple of new projects in Rhode Island. That's one, just to explain how unique the product is. Secondarily, at 25%, Brookline really is leading the way, continues to lead the way. A combination of the amount, as well as the quality of the products, means that this is, is in my opinion, the preeminent sort of program in the Commonwealth. Now, coming to going above 30% right now, we did a lot of research on this. So we did extremely well with this program, and we have sort of managed expectations here, okay? It's a nice position to be in as a consultant, but also slightly concerning because, concerning because I want to make sure they can come back in two or three years' time with another really good report whereby you actually met your green goals and also saved money. Or even if, to Nancy's good point, you know, climate change isn't free, you just met your green goals and didn't save money, but you made your green goals, right? But you only maybe meet green goals and lose a lot of money. And that's the challenge here, because, you know, wherever the credit lies, the Town of Brookline saved a lot of money whilst accomplishing its green goals. If you start going too far above 25, 30% at this stage, things may be different in two or three years' time. We've had feedback from suppliers that they're pretty sure that, that they will be, the rates change every six months, there'll definitely be cycles whereby Brookline's rate will be substantially above the utility rate at some stage. If you start going above 30%, that is indiscretable. And you're going to get blitzed by marketers, and those marketers are awful, as we know. There's been a Tony Jones report that they're looking for those opportunities. There are some legitimate marketers out there, there are a lot of marketers out there, very nefarious practices, take advantage of the low socioeconomic, non-native English speakers, people with fixed income. So that's one risk. And secondarily, it can start to chip away at the green goals itself, because then, you know, they take people out of the program, right? So it's a real balancing act, and I think by, I think it's important to acknowledge the success we've had, build on that success in a methodical way, building a foundation for the future. We understand that climate change is a time-based issue, but I think if you, first of all, suppliers made it clear they'll put additional premium into the price if we go much above 30%, if we go above 30% at all. We have to work hard for them to feel comfortable with 30%. So, but I think if you have a solid foundation, you go up to 30%, remember, it's 30% above the Renewable Photocentric, right? So come 20, come 2022, Renewable Photocentric will be 20%, right? So come 2022, if you go 30%, you're at 50%. I think that's a pretty nice narrative there, okay? 50% by 2022, not bad. So I would applaud, you know, the desire and ambition to go above that. I think for now, I think to build a strong foundation so we're not going backwards in the future, we're going forwards and keeping everybody in the program.
Okay, any other comments, Mr. Clapton? Okay, Ms. Leckler?
So my name's Ed Leckler, and I'm a Town Meeting member from Precinct 8. I'm also a member of Climate Action Brookline and have been active with them for many years. I want to provide a historical perspective, both on Brookline's climate plans, and even step back from there into the past. So if you look at the original warrant article, one of the key results is wishes to offer its residents the option to pay a small premium on individual electricity bills, averaging $7 a month, in order to boost the town's use of renewable sources of electricity by approximately 25%. And so when this warrant was originally constructed, we began with the figure $7 a month, and it was then calculated by Tommy that that would amount to, based upon the best estimates we had at the time, to about a 25% increase in our renewable sources of electricity. And as it moved forward, the 25% became the number that was being considered and not the $7 a month. And so I want to step back for a minute and say, where in the world does $7 a month come from? And it turns out that this whole initiative began with Carol Oldham, who's now, you know, the head of the Massachusetts Climate Action Network, and she and Tommy were the co-petitioners of the original warrant article way back when. But there was a whole group of people that worked on this warrant article, including people like Mary Dewar and others, and myself, and Tommy, of course. And when we talked about the warrant article, we said, well, we can't make the money cost too much, and we decide on $7 a month. Where did that come from? Well, that began all the way back in 2008 with Climate Action Brookline doing a door-to-door campaign. We knocked on 1,500 doors in Brookline and tried to convince people to sign up for a program that was called N-Star Green. That was when EverSource was named N-Star. And N-Star Green was either 50 or 100% renewable, a source of electricity from wind farms. And when the N-Star Green program began, you could get 100% green electricity for just $7 more a month. And for $7 more a month, we were tremendously successful. 1,500 doors knocked on, 30% of the people were home, we left flyers for the rest of them, 25% of people signed up. And I can tell you anecdotally, because I knocked on about half those doors, that when I said $7 a month, people said, oh, that's not much at all. Are you kidding me? I'll do that. That's less than $100 a year. It's less than $100 a year. It's less than a 5% increase in their electricity bill. People didn't see $7 a month as outrageous at all. And so that's how we got to that number. We didn't like $8, it sounded too close to 10. We didn't like $5, because it seemed too low. There was something magical about 7 between, being between 5 and 10. And then, when the actual bidding occurred for CCA here in Brookline, it turned into Brookline Green Electricity, what happened is that the 25% became the target and not the $7 a month, which is okay. But what happened is we got $25, a 25% increase in green electricity for something like $2 a month. And let's just do the math, $2 a month, that's less than $25 a year. People in Brookline are interested in doing, I won't say that, right? Many people in Brookline, maybe even the majority of people in Brookline, are interested in trying to combat climate change. And as Nancy said earlier, this is the cheapest and easiest way that we can make progress in that regard. So this is the time to be bold. And it's especially time to be bold when we're talking about increases perhaps of less than $100 a month. People, sorry, $100 a year, maybe $7 a month. People are willing, the majority of people, I think, are willing to see that kind of increase in their electricity bill if they know that it's going to enhance the amount of renewable electricity they're going to get by substantial amount. And so I think you have to make, you know, this is just me, right? I think you have to make the default much bolder than a change from 25 to 30%. That's not going to cost that much for people, and it's not much of a move. And it's nowhere near Newton, which I think is getting 45%. Not that we have to make Newton our standard, but they have managed to get 45% renewable sources of electricity for a pittance more a month. And I should have come with the numbers that they have, but it's under $5 a month. People can afford, in Brookline, to pay $5 more a month to increase our sources of renewable electricity, because this is the cheapest and easiest way that we get to 0% reliance on fossil fuels and begin that process. And it is also imperative that we move forward in a bold way. And we see that in Town Meeting, right? Everybody gets up and says, can't we do more? Can't we do more? Can't we do more? Can't we do more? And you see it with respect to the electric vehicles, you see it with respect to other ways. So this is the opportunity, because we locked this in.
We have a warrant article we have to deal with, and I want to move this along. Let me just make a point.
I apologize for taking.
Previously, when we discussed this, we had discussions with Tommy, as a matter of fact, about the fact that $7 a month may not be a lot to you and your community, but let's not assume that that is something that's not a significant and material increase for some communities in town. And we had discussions, and Tommy was very, you know, helpful in making sure that that was recognized in the development of the program. I don't remember the details, but that was an important point that I think Tommy brought to the discussion, that we can't be too flip in thinking that because I can afford it, that everyone in town can. So just be careful about that.
Can I just simply say that?
Quickly.
I'm talking about average people in town, and furthermore, it's not like you're forcing them to do that. There is an opt-down. People have the opportunity to opt down. The majority of people, I think, are not in the category that you're talking about, though I don't mean to be presumptuous in that regard.
And we don't forget about them either.
And that this boldness has to speak to the majority, and let's help the people that need to opt down understand that.
Okay, we need to move along. Anyone else have a quick, quick, quick comment? Mr. Clapton?
Sure.
I don't want to deny you the opportunity to speak, but we are pressed for time.
I understand. I'm David Clapton, I'm a Town Meeting member, a member of 350 Massachusetts and Climate Action Brookline as well. I'll just, I'll be very brief. Everybody knows that we're in an emergency, we have to act like we're in an emergency. Secondly, I think that we run the risk of being too cautious in setting these objectives. I don't want to be flippant about what people can afford. I think what we've seen, 94% of the people go with the default. That's apt to be true no matter what, but we don't want to make it so high that a lot of people drop out. I note that electricity use correlates very strongly with income, so in fact, if $7 is an average, the average for low-income families would be substantially less than $7. I think that we saw in Town Meeting that there's overwhelming support for clean energy projects. I want to disagree with something that Nancy said, that the best thing that we can do is opt up to 100%. I think that if we look at it individually, that's certainly true, but the 94% is compelling. I have worked for years in marketing, direct marketing company, and the lazy factor should never be underestimated. Most people will go with the default. I think that we should be very wary of an intermediate, a 55% tier. I think that the people who think about and make a decision are probably going to go to 100%. There might be a few who will go to 55, some of them might have gone to 100, some of them might have stayed at 25. I don't think that's where our focus should be. I think our focus should be getting the base up. I think anything you came in with under $10 would be quite successful.
We got it.
So I can go on for more, but I won't.
Thank you.
I just ask you to be bold in this. And I was confused by the comment about electricity rates changing in six months if we were in a higher thing. I understood this to be a contract over several years, which would lock in a price for that period.
We're referring to the EverSource.
It's that EverSource changes every six months.
Yeah, he said EverSource changes every six months, and the renewable rate could end up being much higher, but it would be locked in for two years. And I think if we're locking something in for two years, we have 10 years, 12 years to get our electricity into a pretty renewable state in Brookline. Obviously, in the world, it won't get there that quickly, in those parts of the world it can. We need to be moving much more quickly than 5% every two or three years.
Okay, thank you. Okay, vote to authorize a town administrator to execute a contract for the continuation of the Community Choice Electrical Aggregation Program for electric supply and renewable energy procurement for Brookline residents and businesses on bid day. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
I'm going to say aye here, but I also just want to say in the future, I think it'd be helpful, at least for me, to actually be able to see the numbers and have some options here to say, this percentage increase for renewable will result for people that live in a one-bedroom or studio or a full house. To be able to see that before we take votes like this, I think would be helpful in the future, but I will vote aye.
I can definitely make that happen.
Chair votes aye. Next, annual Town Meeting warrant articles, do we have any?
We have a new motion that would be more likely taken up Tuesday from Town Meeting Member Conquest.
And that's Article 26 in our packet here?
Article 26, yes. He's got a motion to refer to a moderator.
So we don't have to deal with that tonight?
I just looked for him, I don't see him, might be the one presenting that. 26 is regarding.
Gary.
Something for racial equity.
Oh.
Okay, okay.
27, Van Swayack, can see him in.
Vote to adjourn.
Something, something.
Okay. So seeing nothing else on the agenda and no other business before the board, vote to adjourn, Mr. Franco. Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.